Okay, everybody. Uh, let's get started. This is the regular meeting of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice of the meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the two overtimes on January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as having requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please, Cindy.
Uh, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Quigley?
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Dr. Lawfer?
Here.
Mr. Kinsella?
Here.
Mr. Shavetti?
Here.
And Mr. Leader.
He's absent. And Mr. Chairman, if we didn't indicate, I didn't hear it, and perhaps you read it. We just wanted to indicate that it's the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Um.
Put to the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey.
Uh, seeing there's no old business to carry forward, uh, new business. We have one application on the meeting agenda tonight, Sullivan, twenty-seven McCarter Avenue. If we would, Sandy, promote Mr. Condorius and and I see Mr. Condorius has his hand raised. While we're doing that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I should indicate for the record that I've reviewed the notice materials. They appear to have been ordered. We can check, uh, when Mr. Condorius, so there he is. We can just, uh, perhaps check to see if anybody has any issues, questions, or problems with regard to the notice. And we could ask that they raise their hand. No response. Board has jurisdiction to hear and consider matter. This is the Caitlin and Frank Sullivan application. Twenty-seven McCarter Avenue, block seventy-seven, lot nineteen. We're going to swear it's in the R-ten zone. We're going to swear, Ms. Gable, our professional planner, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear testimony to give the board of your truth, all truth, but truth?
I do.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, before you get on to the merits, my recollection is there were a couple completeness items that perhaps Ms. Gable can outline for the board.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely. Um, so a lot of these are the typical waivers we see. Um, the first one is the completed ownership disclosure. Um, the applicant requested a waiver since they are the owner of the property, and so we recommend that a waiver be granted. Um, Monmouth County Planning Board application. The applicant requested a waiver for this item indicating that it's not applicable. And so we recommend the waiver be granted. Freehold Soil Conservation District application. The applicant also requested a waiver and indicated that it's not applicable. And so we also recommend that it will be granted. However, we also request that, um, the applicant provide testimony to this item during the hearing to confirm. Um, the other item is the Monmouth County Health Department application. It's not applicable, so we recommend a waiver be granted. And then lastly, copies of all easements, covenants, and deed restrictions. The applicant requested a waiver and stated that they would be, this item will be discussed at the hearing, so we recommend that waiver be granted, subject to this being discussed this evening.
Thank you, Elena. Does anybody have any questions about completeness items only? And the waivers? Uh, do I need a motion to?
Let's take a motion. Take a motion to grant the completeness waiver, so we can move on to the merits here?
Yeah, I will make a motion to grant the completeness waivers as listed by Ms. Gable. Second.
And Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway? Mr. Ryan? Mr. Ryan?
I'm sorry, Sandy, yes.
That's okay. Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Shavetti?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, um, Mr. Condorius, are you ready?
Yeah, yes, yes, we are. I just wanted to, uh, let the board know that I have Caitlin Sullivan next to me here, so we're in the same room together, so.
Miss, Miss Sullivan, do you want to give us your full name, spell your last and your address for the record, please?
Sure, it's Caitlin Sullivan, S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N, and the address is twenty-seven McCarter Avenue, Fairhaven, New Jersey.
If you'd raise your right hand, I'm sorry, you please. You do swear testimony to give the board of your truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Condorius, we're going to swear you in too. Give us your full name, spell your last, your address for the record, please.
Anthony Condorius, C-O-N-D-O-U-R-I-S, twenty Bingham Avenue, Robinson, New Jersey.
Swear you do swear testimony to give the board of your truth, all truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes, I do.
And Mr. Condorius, Mr. Chairman, is a licensed, a registered architect of the state of New Jersey. He's appeared before this board on numerous occasions. Will the board accept him as an expert in the field of architecture? Do you wish there is credentials once again?
No, heard them many times, and I have, does anyone have any objections to Mr. Condorius?
So, Mr. Condorius, you're, thank you, you're registered architect in the state of New Jersey. How long you've been so registered?
Uh, nineteen ninety-six.
Okay, terrific. There was a survey prepared by Charles, middle initial V, Bell, B-E-L-L, Junior, PLS, dated July nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, that was submitted with the application, will mark that exhibit A-dash-one. And there were proposed alterations and addition plans prepared by Anthony M. Condorius, AIA, three sheets, September two, two thousand and twenty-one, last revised November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, will mark that A-dash-two. Mr. Condorius?
Yes. Uh, so I can start or maybe?
Sure, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. If you look at the most recent dated plans, they should say November eighteenth. I know it's kind of small to read. I just want to confirm that it's the eighteenth, not the eighth.
Well, thank you for catching that. Is it, is that right, Mr. Condorius? Is that what it says?
Uh, let me check here. I gotta walk up to the screen.
I'm looking at it, and it says the eighteenth.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much. So, A-dash-two, last revised November eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you, Miss Sullivan.
Of course. So, I guess I can jump right in, uh, to the plans. So, my husband and I bought our house back in two thousand and nineteen. Um, we moved in and conducted a few interior additions, which we did go through the proper permit applications and all that for building. Um, at the time, we had always had plans to do an actual addition to the property. Uh, we were more looking at probably a five-to-ten-year plan, but when, uh, COVID hit and my husband started working out of the house permanently, things got a little small and a little cramped a lot faster. Uh, so the proposed plans that we're looking at are, in addition, off of the back left rear side of the house. On the first floor, it will be, um, an office space, and the upstairs will be a master bathroom. Currently, we only have a one full-size bathroom, so again, with two small children. Right now, it works. Um, as they get a little bit older, it might get a little crammed. So, um, kind of fast-tracked our plans slightly with the pandemic.
And what sort of, uh, Mr. Condorius, what sort of variance are we triggering here?
Yes, so, um, there are, there are some existing non-conformities that are not changing. The one variance that's, um, actually, I would say getting extended, is the side setback on the left side of the property. Currently, it's, uh, it's eight feet. And the addition uh, will also maintain that eight-foot setback. So if you look on the plans, you'll see that we jogged in the, uh, the side of the addition a little bit. So we can maintain at least that eight feet uh, without making it any worse, because the property has an angle to it. So as you, as you go to the back, it squeezes in on the house.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused on that, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, because if I'm looking at the survey, oh, wait a second, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at McCarter Avenue. So it's eight foot one on the survey.
Correct.
Your plan looks like it has a little jog though, so how is it still eight foot one? Is that, is that the side that angles, or is it the opposite side of the lot that angle?
Well, I don't know.
Uh, let's, let, let me try to, uh, I, I can share my screen here if you want.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
And are you pulling up what we marked as A-dash-two?
Yeah, yes, it's the exact same plan, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so can you see, uh, my site plan there?
Yep.
Okay, so if you see here that we have eight-point-one at the rear corner of the existing house.
Mm-hmm.
And so in order to maintain that eight-point-one, we we moved the, the addition in about a foot.
Right, the lot line angles that way, okay.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. All right, sorry, uh, carry on.
Um, right, so that's, that's the only, I guess I call it a new variance. The, uh, the other variance is a front setback, which is an existing condition, and that's not changing. And, uh, we have the lot area, the minimum lot area, which we are short. Um, ten thousand is required, and we're at about seventy-five hundred.
And, and the new finished square footage is going to be what? I can't, it's nineteen something?
Uh, the new split, new square footage, excuse me. Trying to get my drawing here, I'm sorry.
Nineteen eighty-six, you zoom it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna move things out of the way.
Yeah, sorry. Excuse me.
Nineteen eighty-six, the hattles, oh, that's the floor area, excuse me.
But, oh, the square footage of the actual addition is three.
No, the, the, the new total is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-six.
Nineteen eighty-six. Okay. It's a fairly modest addition.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I guess the only question that, that comes to my mind actually is, um, obviously, we're extending, we're eight feet, we're two feet short on that side. And we are extending vertically as well as la, I don't even know what word you talk about. Lateral. Lateral.
I get it, yep, backing up.
Back to our back, and yeah, um, so in my mind, one thing I, that, that caught my eye here is where is the neighboring property in relation to that property line? Do we have an overhead? Do we have anything that can give us a clue? Because obviously, airlight and open space, you're extending back. I know it's not a huge space, so what is that, uh, what is the depth of that? Ten feet, ten and a half, I thought I saw?
The, the depth of the, uh, the front-to-back dimension of the addition?
Yeah.
It's, uh, fourteen feet.
Fourteen and a half. And then obviously up twenty, twenty-five feet, I guess it is, and, and.
That extent, yes, correct, that extends up two stories, yes.
Obviously, that's, that's an encroachment, or that's a hardship to the neighbor next door. Do we have any concept of what the lot, to the, to the adjacent lot looks like?
You mean that where the house sits on the adjacent lot, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Um, I could pull up an aerial, I don't know if that's appropriate for me to do that live, but, um, I could pull up a Google.
Uh, um, yeah. Unless anybody has an objection to it, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that. Well, we're, we're. Excuse me? Yeah? Is there an overhead in plan enters?
There is no overhead on my plans, no, but I can pull up a Google, a Google.
Elena, do we have an overhead?
Um, that was submitted with the application. I know in my report, I usually include an aerial map.
Page.
But.
It, it's, it's page eight of your report, Elena.
Yes, I have it on page eight in my report. I can show everybody if it will pick it up.
Yeah, I've got it, that's good.
Um, that I keep in my memo, um.
When it looks to be.
There, okay, there, I have it up, if you can see that.
Uh, I don't see yours, Mr. Condorius. I do have it in my. I have another planning report. So that, is that their driveway? No, I don't think it is.
No, it is not. His driveway is on the opposite side, um, of his, against ours, right on his side. It's like a little side patio walkway? Where his garbage bins are.
And was any thought given to, to jogging in the, the, uh, the addition sums to not trigger the variance? Uh, obviously, you're, you're one point nine feet shy of not triggering any variance at all. Why, why does it, you know, there's dead space to the right there, I guess is a deck, and I understand you want to expect it, get the maximum use out of the deck and the outdoor space, and yes, it looks even, but for the, um, for the saving the hassle of coming for a variance and potentially not getting a variance, why not you know, avoid it altogether?
Yeah, no, I can speak to that. Um, trust me, I, we tried that, so I don't know if you can still see Tony's, um, plans on the screen, or if they're in front of you. You'll notice to the right of what we're calling our family room, or office space, that is a sliding glass door. And so we butt up the addition wall as close to that sliding glass door as possible. So the only thing that we could do is remove that sliding glass door, which to be honest, that was a change that we made. We moved into the home to bring in more natural light to the downstairs. Um, so that's, it was, we played the, the game of, do we knock out the new sliding glass door, replace it with just a single door to not need a variance, or do we attempt for the variance, and it just, this is where we are?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just, just so we're aware, even if that's side aligned, I think they'd still be deficient in the total side yards.
Yes, they would. But it's one less.
No, no, I, I don't disagree. I'm simply saying they would.
I mean, no, no, under, understood.
Understood. They would have been sent here anyway.
Right.
Just.
Well, they would be deficient in existing, but they wouldn't be exacerbating the difference, because the other side of this is not.
Al, you're breaking up severely.
I think, no, they efficiency, but it would, they would.
I'm not, I'm.
Room is. Hold, hold on. Am I the only one who's having problems with Mr. Shavetti's audio?
No. No, he's, he's garbled.
Al, I think it would still trigger a variance, because you would have an exacerbation of the total side yard deeper into the lot. So you'd be at, you'd be at nineteen point six feet for both sides back there where twenty-four is required. So you'd be exacerbating it back. It, it wouldn't be as short as the front end, but it would still be within the required setback, I believe.
Yeah, you just, the, the, the thing you would be avoiding is, is the hardship or the, uh, creating a hardship to the neighbor on that side where you are encroaching onto airlight and open space.
Peter, uh, my concern is that the next-door neighbor, uh, to the left of the house is a ranch. And, um, while it's not a big problem right now, if they do a renovation uh, or they go up, uh, on their property, you're going to create a very significant alley back there. And, uh, I had the same question that, that you did, I mean, and I would, I would personally like to see the addition move at least a couple feet, uh, away from the, uh, from that driveway, so that you're basically, uh, not triggering a variance, at least on the side where you're doing that one addition.
Yeah, that was, that was my concern, obviously, when looking at the plan, and then saying, well, what's, what, what's there? Obviously, it's the, you know, it's, I get it, I understand the, um, the financial bit about it and bringing in more light with that sliding glass door. But for the sake of the, what you're causing by extending that eight-foot setback, which is pretty tight. I mean, ten is minimal, eight is tight, and then you're going up another twenty-five feet. And, uh, I, I, that's, that's the concern that I have.
What about creating, uh, you're creating more light coming in through the, uh, what you have listed as your, as your family room? Uh, putting a sliding glass door there? I mean, and certainly, you know, you have plenty of windows on the, uh, on the back portion of the house.
Well, it wasn't so much about the light, it was, it was, that was part of it, obviously, but the, the, the real problem is that, that sliding door was put in fairly recently, and we tried to get as close to it as possible. We had to remove it to take, to be able to make this addition comply.
Yeah, I mean, you replace it with a single French door, which could probably be oversized, any of that sliding glass door is how big, Mr. Condorius, is that six feet probably, or, or more?
Uh, yes.
You know, you could probably, uh, do a larger single French door there. I, I understand economics of the situation, but being about, uh, not encroaching or not causing a hardship to the neighbor, I think it's, uh, it's definitely something worth exploring. Considering this is totally new construction, you know, it's a total new addition, you're not working upstairs with, uh, and even looking at the second-floor plan, you're adding that bathroom, shifting it over, in my opinion, doesn't cause an undue let me just bring up the planes in front of me. I get it, it'll be a little odd, because you'll have the, the bathroom shifted over, but you, so you know, you can do the same structure, just shoved over. Because there's nothing to the right of that, that's causing, that would cause you a problem.
Again, I know it's silly.
My. I'm looking at the, uh, Peter, I'm looking at the aerial. I guess in, um, in the, um, HGA plans. And, and it's a little hard to interpret, but I mean, it looks like at the moment, both houses sort of end on the same plane. And, and this addition, if I'm getting it right, this addition is going to extend off of this property. And at the moment, there's nothing on the adjacent property in that, in that area that we're talking about. So, I, I mean, I mean, quite frankly, I don't, I don't see the light and open space.
There's.
Huh?
There.
Mr. Ridgeway, do you mean that the addition on this house would be parallel to just yard space on the house next door?
Yes, yes, uh, yeah, yes, quickly.
Understandable, understandable, John. I'm just trying to explore, you know, why, why don't we want to move it over to, to not trigger that side variance, uh, that side yard, you know, setback variance, and then just, just exploring it? You know, seeing has, has everything been done to not?
No, do you understand that, Pete, and I appreciate that? But I think we start to get into the reasons why here. So, yeah, I just wanted to call out, there's, there's nothing adjacent um, that would appear on the neighboring property that would, in my mind, create some negative impact.
But that does create an issue if the neighbor does decide to do an addition. Uh, it, it basically is moving very close to the property line. And if there's an option of not moving that close to the property line, I think that, that we ought to avail ourselves of that option.
I understand that, I respect that, Dr. Lawfer, but I don't think we can, we can anticipate you know, what's going to happen next. We had to always take what's in front of us. And, and so, yeah, while I, I can understand that somebody, we'll have to, we'll have to judge that one if, and when that would be in front of us.
Yeah, that's well said, John. I, 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 I can see that.
Um, I, you know, I looked at the aerial and agree with Mr. Ridgeway, um, in that point. I have a question now for Mr. Condorius. If we do shift over this addition, you have an existing bath here, and it looks like there's a window there. Is that then going to affect that second-floor window, which I think that is, uh, you know, if you lose that window, you know, that's a, uh,
Yeah.
you know, something I wouldn't want happen to my house.
Yeah, I didn't notice that.
Uh, so that's a great question, but I believe, uh, it, it, it wouldn't quite, the window could probably stay, but it would get very close to it, though.
Yeah, and you, you probably don't want it that close. You know, I wouldn't want it that close.
Right.
Just not sure if kicking it over one and a half feet, whatever we talked about, is going to make material prints to what it looks like, anyway.
Um. Anything further, Mr. Condorius?
No, I, I think we basically explained everything.
Um, is the uh, patio deck, I saw that on the, on the planners' report, that, are we exacerbating, are we extending that as well, and to exacerbate that side yard?
Oh.
I don't see anything, I don't see anything on your plans that kind of speaks to that. How tall is that off the?
Yeah. Yeah, the property actually, as you, as you can see here, it, it, it gets, the setback keeps improving. On, on the, on the right side of the house, the setback improves as we move back.
Nine and a half.
Right. So.
Do we not trigger that side as well, Elena?
No, there's just, as long as it's no more than six inches above grade, um, it doesn't, it can conform to the requirements of an accessory structure.
Okay.
The stipulation in the, or as long as it's not, there's, um, depending on the size and how many steps, um, but if it's essentially at grade, would you uh, which I believe it is. Mr. Condorius, can you confirm that it's going to be, uh, at grade patio?
Um, actually, I it is not going to be a great patio.
It is not going to be at grade.
No, it is not.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, if that's also a non-conformity that's being extended. I understand that, that the combined is, obviously, it's shy on both sides, right? You're eight and seventeen-six.
Correct.
And we need ten and twenty-four. So if we extend that patio, which is not at grade, that's going to be an extension of the combined side yard, right?
Correct.
Okay. So the patio is triggering it as well. Obviously, it's a less impactful thing on that side of the yard at nine and a half feet, but it's still something that we have to write into the, if should the board uh, grant, um, uh, relief, it'll have to be taken into account.
Correct.
All right.
How, how many, um, feet above grade is the rear patio existing and/or proposed?
It's about, I think it's about sixteen inches.
Sixteen inches? Yeah, it would need to, um, conform with, to the requirements of the principal structure then. I was under the impression that it was, you know, an at-grade patio.
Right, yeah, I apologize if my plans weren't clear, I'm sorry, but, but, um, yeah, so, right, that, I guess that's an additional variance, uh.
Right, it would still be the, um, probably the does it conform to the one-side yard setback on that side?
Oh, it's shy.
Now, yeah, if you look at it, it's, it's actually encroaching, you can see the, the, uh, these dash lines. This is the fourteen-foot side over here.
Right, but if it lines up with the eight-point, don't they both have to be at least ten total, no less than total, no less than twenty-four? So if that matches the eight-point-five foot setback of the front of the dwelling on that side, you also are deficient, you're extending laterally the deficient side yard setback on that side as well?
Yes.
Right.
That's correct.
Although the lines, the line skews. Do you make ten feet back there, or is it less than? Five, nine and a, oh, that's a good question.
Um, honestly, I, I can check that right now.
It says nine and a half, obviously, if you come in eh, and that, and the, and the lot angles, so.
Yeah, the, uh, the back, the back corner of that deck is ten point five feet.
What about that front corner?
Front corner. Yeah.
Where, where it touches the house?
Right.
Okay, I can tell you, it's, um, it's like nine point nine. So, yeah, we, we could pull the deck in like three inches and we, we comply over there, so, I mean, we'd hit, we'd make the ten feet.
Isn't that heavily treed back there?
Yes.
Yeah.
That will be the next question.
Yeah, I'm not worried so much about that. I, I, you know, we have a code for a reason, and uh, I, I really don't like the idea of going up on the, uh, on the addition on the left-hand side. I, I, I think that ought to come back a couple feet, and I don't think that it it really changes things significantly, and, uh, and, and you could comply with, with that ten-foot setback there. Now, I'll just leave it at that. That's just my thought.
I switched devices. Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah, much better. Yes.
Okay. Uh, I also had a question about, um, improvement standards. Um, this creates an additional fourteen or fifteen feet of the driveway being less than the minimum ten-foot width? Is that something that would require variance as well?
Is the driveway going further back?
To the garage in the back corner, yes.
Next garage, yep.
Do you plan to use the existing garage as a garage? Because right now, you're not using it as a garage.
Um, I want to say yes, we just finished that like a month ago, so right now it's a catch-all for all of our stuff, but the, yes, the goal is to use it as a, as a natural garage.
And so the driveway would extend back to the garage, which means that right now you have two cars parked, uh, basically in front of the house, in front of the front setback.
My group says existing driveway, yes.
And so you'll, you would be able to move the cars back away from the, uh, the front yard setback? Thank you.
Yes, sorry, yes, I realize you can't see my head all the time, yes.
Is, is the width, is the width of that driveway sufficient to get a car back there? Aren't parking spaces normally nine?
Aren't parking spaces normally nine feet wide?
They are, but you, you can, you can, you, you can drive a car through the eight feet, cars, cars aren't. A, a, a normal car is not eight feet wide, so you could get, yeah, you wouldn't want to park in that one little squeezed area, but once you get past that point, it, it opens up.
Right, but you don't have any concern about the corner, the rear corner of the addition?
Well, one of the things we thought about is, is, if it's, we were maintaining the same corner that the other, that the main house has, so. If you can get past that, like, we were thinking that you could get past the other one as well.
Right, but the, the minimum required width for the driveway is ten feet. It's already eight point one to the back corner of the house as it exists. And you're extending that narrowness back to the end of the. Addition now as well.
That's correct, yes.
And there's a fence back there now, that, that fence will be removed?
Fence, uh, you mean like blocking you from getting into the backyard?
Yes.
Yes, that, yeah, right now that's just to crowd my kids in the back, but yes, that will be removed.
Realized now that there was a minimum size of driveway.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
Standards thirty point nine. Two, I'm not sure of the exact.
Good new one to me.
But it's called improvement standards, and there is a minimum width for the driveway for a single or double residential. Of ten feet.
Does that require variance relief?
I don't know, I just asked that question at the beginning of, once I got my audio working again.
Mr. Irene?
I suppose, I suppose it would, cause here's the issue, if it's in design standards. Then generally, it's only gonna be applicable to site plans and subdivisions, but if you reference single-family and two-family. You don't have site plans applicable to single-family and two-family. So I'm gonna assume it requires a variance if it's applicable to single-family and two-family.
Gotta say, I've never seen this, no, no, I don't recall ever having seen it. Or having been called out for it. Um, okay. You know what, if, if the board seeks to grant relief, then I guess we'll have to memorialize it or, or at least, uh, uh, make note of it.
It's in thirty dash nine point two, but beyond the nine point two, I don't know what.
Yeah.
Section of that it is.
Does anybody have the code in front of them or?
I do.
Before I go look for my binder.
I'm looking through the purpose of this section now to see if it applies to one and two families and I. Not sure if it does, give me one. The residential site improvement standards.
It's in section nine, uh, thirty dash nine point two B. Excuse me, this is a thirty dash nine point two six B, it's on page thirty, colon, one forty-five. For single-family, two-family dwellings, a driveway exclusive of curb return shall not be less than ten feet in width. No more than twenty-four feet in width. The max, the maximum curb depression or opening width at the street shall be the driveway width plus four, but not more than twenty-eight feet. So it says for single-family, two-family dwellings, driveway exclusive of the curb return shall not be less than ten feet nor more than twenty-four feet in width. Uh, we would call it out as variance, so if the board sees fit to grant the approvals, we'll just, we'll call that in the resolution as well. Hey, uh, anybody have more questions for, um, Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Condors?
I have one question, Pete, um, Mr. Condors, where are the air conditioning units gonna be relocated to?
To the back, to the back of the addition, yeah, behind the addition.
Same. Where they have to go, cause, um, I guess there's compliances, again, like if I, we don't have the side. The room on the side, even if the driveway wasn't there, I think that setback, if I remember correctly, it has to be ten feet, and we don't have that, so they would just be pushed. To the back.
Yeah, behind you, and within, out of the ten-foot setback.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I have a few questions from my report, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
Sure, um, can you provide some testimony about, um, the materials and colors proposed for the exterior of the addition? Is it proposed to match the existing or is the entire structure proposed to be recited?
Uh, we're just keeping what's there, so vinyl siding, same color.
Okay, thank you, um, my next question is, um, if you can just confirm that. The covered front porch and the cantilevered portions of the second floor addition are in, are included in the building coverage and impervious coverage calculations?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Um, are you proposing to extend any attic space into the proposed addition?
No.
No, just, just whatever the roofline provides, but nothing that's usable.
And they're willing with access to it.
Yeah.
And then, so you are extending the driveway to meet the garage in the rear, correct?
Yes.
And you're adding the patio, which is actually, um, requires the variance relief, since it's not a grade, correct?
Correct, and, and the driveway also, just for your information, driveway is included in the, uh, lot coverage as well, in the calculations.
Okay, great, um, I noticed, um, wind in my sight, because that there's actually a fence that kind of crosses over to. Across where the proposed driveway is proposed to be extended to, are you proposing to add a gate or completely remove the, that fence there?
Uh, it's gonna be removed, I mean, maybe down the line, we'll add something, but no, it's gonna be removed.
Is that still existing? There's a shed all the way in the back corner of the lot, is that still there? Is that, was that, is that the garage? I don't think.
That is the garage, yes, and that is what, um, we just got our permit closed on January eleventh by, um, the Ruffin Borough.
And is the proposed garage square footage included? In the lot coverage calculations?
Yes, it is.
Do you plan on removing any trees to, uh, extend the patio at all?
Nope, there are no trees to remove there.
Okay.
There's that tree where the addition is though, right?
N- no, uh, yes, I, I, I don't consider a tree, it's more of a nuisance, um, it's. Yeah, it might have been a crepe myrtle, so yeah, sorry, I apologize, that is there now, will be removed.
What is the area of, so, the garage is, is the. Entire area of the garage existing or was that just approved through permits?
That was approved, but yeah, they, they got a, a, a building permit and it went through zoning and, right?
Yeah, it didn't require any variances, it was approved through the zoning board, and then it made its way through the, I, uh, I guess it's construction.
Okay.
Yeah, building permit, excuse me, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, make sure of that, cause I, I thought that it was labeled existing garage, so I, I kind of thought that it was, you know, already there, um, but.
It is, so the reason it's existing is, we knew that by the time we got in front of you all of the zoning board, that project would be done, it was completed over the summer. And all our permits were just officially closed out, um. I guess about a month ago, so yes, it is an existing garage.
Okay.
So the survey being dated from two thousand nineteen, that's just shows a shed, but it's now a full garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And the depth of the lot is a hundred and fifty feet, is that right?
Depth of the lot is one hundred and fifty feet, yes.
And a hundred feet is required?
For the lot width?
No, for the depth, Tony.
Oh, uh. The lot depth required is a hundred feet, that's correct.
Okay, so it's fifty feet, um, longer than. The minimum requirements, the problem is that it's at the width that it should be. Which is what's making the design of the addition difficult.
Right. Well, the middle, middle lot frontage is seventy-five feet.
Oh, seventy-five, okay.
No, it's the sliding glass door in the back that's making it difficult.
Right. But there is a lot of open space and light. That, in that extra fifty feet going back, that's my point, and the, the house next door also has a similar. Depth to it. Right? A hundred and fifty foot depth. So I mean, it's not like some of the plans we see where everything's sort of piling on top of one another. There is a fair amount of, um, lawn area in the back of both of the houses. And is that garage a single-car garage? I look so that way, yeah.
Yes, it's a single-car garage.
And I'm, am I correct that you backed up against Green Acres?
Correct.
Yes, the Fairhaven Fields natural area.
Oh, McCarter.
Um, can you, uh, provide some testimony about whether freehold soil conservation district is required? Um, I only question this since, you know, you're removing the, proposing to remove the existing rear patio, you're adding a new. Elevated patio, you're extending the driveway, um, do, are you triggering the requirements for that permit?
Um, we're, yeah, we're not, we're, we're not disturbing more than, um, five thousand square feet. Um, of course, we, we would get the letter, when we submit for building department, uh, we would get a letter of no interest from real.
And I don't know if this matters, not the existing back patio is, um. Probably about twenty-one, but one foot by one foot, like, pavers just placed. On top of brass, so it's not, we're not ripping up a elaborate back patio, I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
Okay.
Sorry, apart from the, um. Obviously not wanting to take out the sliding door that was just put in. Could you address any other design difficulties or other difficulties with moving the?
Yes.
The addition.
Right, there was another thing that I was gonna bring up, um, you know, one might ask the question. Well, what if you just keep the slider and just make the, make the space more narrow, but the problem is, it's already. It's already ten feet wide, so if I, if we took two feet off of it, the room would become very. Uh, just narrow, and it'd be like an eight-foot room, so really, really, uh, affects the usability of the room.
Taking the slider and moving it.
Unfortunately, there's a kitchen counter there that's preventing that as well, so, uh, yeah.
So you couldn't move the slider to the outside of a, um. Of an addition that's pulled into the middle of the house in the back? Yeah. Like.
Yeah, well, see, this, this new room is an office, so it only has a single door for, for privacy reasons, so. There's really not any light coming in from this room, at least when the door shut.
But you've got, you've got a slider on that door as well, though, right?
There is, yeah, there is a slider here, but it, between that room and the house, there is only a single door.
Okay.
And, so.
Where, where's the office? I thought that was a family room.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really an office, I, it got labeled family room, I, I'm sorry about that, it's actually home office, yeah.
And it's a modest side, I mean, what is it, ten by thirteen or something like that?
And my, yeah, ten by fourteen on the outside, so. Even less on the inside.
I mean, you're not up to the point where you're constrained by lot coverage. Or habitable floor area or habitable floor area ratio. So I mean, if you wanted to, you could even make. That wider after you moved it over two feet. And close that sliding glass door or move the sliding glass door out and have a mudroom too, right?
There's, there are many, yeah, we could do that, that, um, but the idea was to have that slider go directly to the patio, so.
We're also, I mean, bigger room, more money, so we're also looking at, um, financial reasons to keep it. The way it is.
You know, I have a question about the patio. Because it's not a grade. Um, what is that triggering?
It has to match, it, it has to meet the setbacks of the principal dwelling to which it's attached.
So, so I guess, I would ask, can, can we, wouldn't you consider just keeping it at grade?
Well, on that side, Mr. Ridgeway, Mr. Condor said that he's gonna meet the side yard setback of ten feet. So the, the impact would be to the extent that impacts the total combined side yards. But even though the house is set back only eight feet on that side, the side opposite from the proposed addition. Mr. Condor said that because the property line skews, he's essentially able to make that deck meet to ten-foot single side setback on that. On that side, if I'm correct, Mr. Condors?
Yes, just, just by moving in a few inches, we can make it comply, that's correct.
Cause it gets, it gets wider as you go back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did, did that, did that answer your question, Mr. Ridgeway, although it would impact total combined side yards? Because it's within, it's within the setbacks total combined area.
I just wanted to point out that if, um, I don't, Mr. Irene, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that if the. Rear patio conforms to the one side yard setback of ten feet. And then from the addition is about, we'll call it eleven feet and then plus the eight feet. I believe then it would come, the patio itself would comply with the one and the both side yard setback.
Well, I. If they bring it in by a couple inches and.
But because of the addition, it's going to the whole overall, both of them.
When, when, when you take the total side yards of the, of the proposed addition. And that patio, you're gonna end up with, you're gonna have ten feet on, as I'm facing at the right side. And you're gonna have proposed eight feet on the left, that's eighteen, where twenty-four is required.
Right.
They're moving it in, though, that we're not exacerb, we, we, I'm just trying to figure out how, how we would memorialize it or, or. It exacerbates the total side yard, but not the single side for that side.
Correct.
Okay. Clear as mud. Um. Anymore? Well, Mr. Condors, you have anymore?
Um, not, not, not this time, no.
We've had a bunch of discussion on it. Gentlemen, actually, uh, any interested parties, sorry, my, my mistake. Any members of the public, uh, have any comments or questions of Mr. Condors or the applicant? Please use the raise your hand feature.
Or comments about the application in general.
Nope. I don't see anybody.
Let the record reflect no response.
Okay. Discussion. You know, we've all had a very nice, and I appreciate everybody's comments and questions, everybody was fairly vocal, which is a nice thing to see. Anything further?
Yeah, Peter, I, I'll, I'll weigh in on this, um, you know, just so that people will understand where I stand on this whole thing. Um, you've got a, I, I'm not worried about the right side of the house, the right side of the house is heavily treed, you've got a nice fence over there. Um, I, and, and the neighbor is far enough away where I, I don't think that's an issue at all. That, I'm really concerned about the left side of the house, you've got a tight driveway, you're doing an addition, which is a two-story addition. Uh, that will encroach on the, on the side yard setback. Uh, you've got new construction, it, it's not difficult or, or a great hardship. To comply with the, with the left side yard setback by simply moving the, uh, the addition over two feet. And I can't see preserving a sliding door, uh, as enough of a reason. Uh, for me to go against an established code, uh, it just, you, you have so many options or so many alternatives. To, to not, uh, further constrain that side yard setback that I don't see any reason to, uh. To not move it over two feet, and then you've solved your problem, and everything else looks perfectly fine, that's my position.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Regardless of the intent, I always have a problem with. These applications that come up where an extensive interior renovation or even full renovation has been done. With the exception of whatever would.
With the exception of whatever would trigger variance and then just that one item comes to the board. It leaves no real give and take to come to a solution. And from what I heard in the testimony, that sliding glass door was added as part of the recent interior renovation. Uh, if that had been part of this application, then there would have been a less moderately impactful way to slide this over a few feet, two feet uh, to make it comply at least with one of the side yard setbacks. Uh, you're adding a fifteen foot long two-story addition to the side of the property where the sun comes from to the neighbor's backyard and house. You're narrowing an additional length of the driveway below the minimum width for the improvement standards for the driveway. I'm not sure how that got done to begin with, with adding the, the garage. How that got approved with the driveway width, I don't know. And then uh, the, the patio, I believe extends past the addition. So the, the, so that's not a grade, that's going to change the rear yard setback as well, I believe. And just, you know, from a construction perspective, if you've got, you, you're not up against any limitations on the, on the square footage. But you're cantilevering plumbing areas out over open air. Which makes little sense to me. You know, if this was slid over two feet, it would be right behind the other um, bathroom and you would be able to plummet without, you know, the, the difficulties you run into since you can't run plumbing in an exterior wall. Um, that's, those are just some of my two cents, but I I agree with Skip.
Um, I have a question after Mr. Shavetti's comments. Miss Sullivan, when was the renovation completed that installed the sliding glass door?
Tail end of two thousand nineteen and I. If you don't mind me just clarifying really quickly, when we did that interior renovation, we really didn't have, there was no malicious intent of let's get the interior done so that it sways potential future improvements. These additions were so far not on our radar when we purchased the house. It was almost a a dream board of essence of hopefully one day we'll be able to afford and put these additions on. So I just want to make sure that the boards are aware that there was no malicious intent of let's get the inside done for the sliding glass door and then use that as our bargaining chip.
Yeah, I, I, uh, let me just stop. I don't think there was any malicious intent. And I also think that we, that we shouldn't put ourselves in a position to suppose that there might be malicious intent. You said that you moved into this house. Um, it's post COVID that your husband is working from home. Uh, as many of us are, I am sitting in, uh, a beautiful home office that we built, uh, post COVID. Um, Anthony is very familiar with it. He designed it. Um, you know, so I completely understand and I think many people are in the same boat. Um, so this is design that was done, um, you know, after, well after that, um, you know, additional renovation. So, um, you know, I understand that. Um, the one, there's two things that I have an issue with. Um, or one thing I have an issue with and one thing that I'm going to hopefully assuage some other issues that some people may have. You know, if you do move that addition over, yes, you might say that window in the bathroom, which I think by code there should be, or we want a window in the bathroom. Um, you might not lose it, but you're going to severely encroach upon it, which I don't think is ideal. Building this addition, while again, not ideal, I think probably is the best solution. Um, you know, one of the concerns that has been voiced is light. Uh, and I'm looking at a Google overview of the property. And if the orientation is correct, which I assume it is, uh, the back of your house is at about a southeastern orientation, which means the house next to it is on the same orientation. An addition put into that space really isn't going to impact the light in the backyard. You also have no development behind you. So I guessing, you know, and I'm not a, uh, an expert, but just as the sun moves through the sky, I don't think there's really going to be a negative impact, a tremendous negative impact or measurable negative impact, uh, on the neighbor's yard.
Mr. Consell, pardon the interruption, but is that the same Google that we have from Ms. Gable's report or a separate one?
It's the, it's, I'm looking at my computer.
Can you, can you share the screen? Cause we're going to now have to, we're going to have to mark that as a board exhibit.
Hold on. I didn't know I was opening a can of worms here. Hold on a second. Um, you know what? Can I ask? Ms. Gable, could you pull up the Google overview? Cause I think you could probably share this easier. Cause I'm working off of two computers.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, you mean to pull up my report and show that, um, show the map from there?
Well, if, if, well, Mike, do you need to see the exact thing I'm looking at? It could be a map with the, or with the, with the compass orientation on it.
If we're going to refer to a photograph during the proceedings, we, we need to pull up the photograph because we're going to have to mark it.
Okay, so it's, it is a Google overview. Let me see if I could. How would I do this?
Uh, what we can do instead, if Ms. Gable can pull up hers from her report, you can make your comments based on that if you like.
That sounds a lot easier.
Yeah, we just need to have part of, part, in case anybody reviews the record, we need to have part of the record be whatever we're referring to.
And I apologize for opening.
No, no need to apologize. Here you go. Now this is the, this is the aerial view from Ms. Gable's report dated whatever date it was.
The aerial imagery is from the New Jersey State twenty twenty near map service.
All right. So to make it easy, what we're going to do is we're going to mark Ms. Gable's report of December twenty three, two thousand twenty one as board exhibit one, which contains the aerial that we're referring to.
And if you see at the bottom, uh, was at the left-hand corner, there is the compass orientation. So those properties, you know, it's a southeastern exposure basically. So, um, you know, that, that is a pretty sunny spot. I don't think extending out that building fifteen feet is going to have a tremendous negative impact. Now that is just my unprofessional opinion. You know, just looking at this and knowing, you know, I spent a lot of time over in the Fairhaven Fields, walking my dogs and it is a very sunny spot. So I don't think that that's something that, you know, we should really get bogged down upon.
I think, uh, uh, thanks, Mr. Consell. And I, I tend to agree with, with Mr. Consell on that, having looked at this, uh, you know, again and again, plus the, I think the fact that the building is, let's face it. I, I live in a neighborhood where people are building thirty-one feet to get up to the top, you know, as high as I can build it coming out of the ground. The building height is twenty-five, twenty-five and a half, which is considerably lower than what we're seeing in quite a few other lots. I think, um, I think given that plus the orientation a lot, I, I, I tend to agree on the, on the light issue. And thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Consell.
And, and Mr. Nachesney, if I could interrupt once more, because we did reopen for Ms. Sullivan and I guess Mr. Condor. So we're once again going to ask any interested parties if they have any questions for either Ms. Sullivan or Mr. Condor, or if they would like to make any comments on the application. And then we're going to return to the board for the deliberations. Any interested parties, raise your hands.
Don't see any, Mike.
Let the record reflect none. Apologize for the interruption, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. Thank you for holding us, uh, honest.
Okay, um, anybody we haven't heard from?
Yeah, um, to me, the unfortunate thing is that the, uh, the addition is on the more narrow side of the lot. But looking at the way it's been designed, I think it would be a hardship to pull it into the center of the house. And whether, you know, you could, it's fair to ask the applicants to sort of, um, you know, have twenty twenty hindsight and think that they were going to be compelled to to shift around their, um, working situation and build an office, I think is a little difficult. So I, to me, frankly, it's a little bit of a close call because it is close to the next door and the lot is narrow. But I think that it is the best that they can do. And I don't think that the, um, the closeness to the next door neighbor outweighs the benefits of the plan, um, as presented. I think it is modest. It's not, they're not being piggish about it. And it's going to be an improvement to the dwelling. So I would be in favor of it.
No doubt, considering there's only one bath in the property at the moment.
Yeah, I, I think we have to remember what the purpose of this addition is, right? We're putting, uh, an office space on the ground floor. You're, you're adding a second bathroom and the logical spot to put it off of the, the master bedroom. Of course, and I just don't understand why kicking it over a, a foot or two is going to make a material difference to what this is going to look like. Uh, even from the neighbor's yard and there's nothing there to even consider. I, I'm not troubled by the addition really at all. I, I'm more troubled by people trying to drive a car through an eight-foot driveway. Bang off the side of the house. And eventually if there's teenage children, uh, like I have, um, it could get a little dicey, but that's, uh, that's not really my call of duty, I suppose.
Okay.
Peter, I would agree with everything Mr. Ryan and Mrs. Quigley have stated. I would also point out, I think Mrs. Quigley pointed out that the, the, the depth of this lot is fifty feet or a hundred and fifties where a hundred is. Uh, and then the, even the fact that this is backing up to the, um, to the woods area, which will never be developed. Um, so yeah, I think we, we started off the conversation as a very modest um, addition. Um, I, I think they worked with in, um, in, you know, in, in, with every regard to the space that they have. Yeah, I would agree that the driveway is probably a little narrow, but um, I, I think it's, um, as proposed, um, you know, something that we should, um, you know, consider.
And, and we're working with an existing structure. You know, if we were laying out a house on a blank slate, it, it wouldn't look like this for sure. But, you know, Mr. Condor and the Solvins are working within the constraints of, of the house that's there. And I think it's a reasonable addition.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as submitted. The variance is sought with the additional variances that we've identified tonight.
Is that sufficient, Mike? Do we have to call out the, the driveway in by name or?
We, we, we're going to reference the driveway and we're going to reference the, um, well, we're going to reference the relief for the proposed addition, which would be the single side yard. We're going to reference the proposed addition with the proposed deck to the extent that they impact the total combined side yards. Uh, you also have the driveway as Mr. Shavetti pointed out. But the proposed deck is going to be made to conform on that right-hand side, single side yard setback, as I understand.
Conditioned on that, right? Okay. Brokaw, Sandy?
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Not concerned about the light. I think it's a nicely designed plan. I like to see it moved over two feet to the right. We're not moving it to the center of the house. But based on what, what has been submitted, I have to vote no.
Mr. Consella?
Yes.
Mr. Shavetti?
No.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Condor. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Appreciate you coming before us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we have a few administrative items. Would anybody like to do the administrative items today? Cause I'm sitting in a weird spot. Um, Mrs. Quigley, would you like to read the resolution recognizing Mr. Ludman's service?
No.
No? Okay.
It's just that I haven't printed it out, so I would have to go. I mean, I've reviewed it, but I'm not prepared to read it unfortunately. I feel like.
Pete, if I, if I could find it quickly before anyone else can, I will read it.
Thanks, Paul.
Nicely drafted, Mike. That, that, uh, it's a nice looking, nice looking resolution.
Thank you.
And I will say in my defense, I cleaned out my inbox and I organized things, which means I'm not going to be able to find it quickly.
Uh, I have it, I have it in front of me.
If my audio holds up, I'll read it.
Oh, thanks, Al. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, go, go, Al.
Whereas Adam Ludman, having served as a member of the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough of Fairhaven from the time of his initial appointment in two thousand eighteen through and including the time of his retirement from the board at the end of the calendar year twenty twenty-one. And whereas the board desiring to publicly recognize and expresses its appreciation to Adam Ludman for his dedicated and professional service and valuable input and participation as a member of the board. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the board hereby finds and concludes that special reasons exist for the adoption of this resolution. Recognizing Adam Ludman for his valuable service as a member of the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough of Fairhaven. And be it further resolved by the board that it makes and adopts this resolution and further hereby extends to Adam Ludman the board's best wishes for success in all his future endeavors.
Michael, he get a hard copy of that?
I'm sorry, Skip.
Will he get a hard copy of that?
Once, once the resolution is executed, I'm sure our Cracker Jack secretary, Ms. Papa, will forward it to Mr. Ludman.
Need to vote?
Do you need a motion?
I don't think we do.
Motion, motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Thanks, Mike.
I can't make it. Someone else has to make it.
Oh, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
You got that, Sandy? Okay.
I'm changing my, my, okay. Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Consella?
Yes.
And Mr. Shavetti?
Yes.
Um, I'll run through these, I have the thing in front of me. Um, the, uh, resolution to dismiss the Burke application. Uh, I will have read it and have suggesting no changes. We'll make a motion to uh, adopt the resolution dismissing the Burke application.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Second.
Hey, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Consella?
Yes.
And Mr. Shavetti?
Did I vote on taking the action or?
Uh, no, he did not.
Can get to an action. What, what happened is we, we commenced the hearing. And then the.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the Atkins Council sent in a letter requesting that it be withdrawn on behalf of the Atkins, that it be withdrawn without prejudice. So.
Could vote on it, so.
Yeah, we can call Mr. Shavetti.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, moving forward, resolution to authorize the award of contract for board attorney. I'm stuck with Mr. Irene for another year. Uh, I will make the, make the motion to adopt the resolution, authorizing the award of contract for board attorney.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
And Mr. Shiovetti?
Yes.
On resolution, adoptment of board secretary, I make a motion to approve the resolution or adopt the resolution for appointment of board secretary for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
And Mr. Shiovetti?
Yes.
Uh, next item up is email addresses for board members. I saw an email about this, Sandy, obviously, uh, that came back from, I guess it was from Teresa, saying that there was some cost involved. What information do we have on this now? And where are we moving with it?
Um, she's looking into alternatives because the cost that she was given was a hundred dollars per board member. Um, so they're looking to see what other alternatives they can come up with.
Okay. So we'll just keep moving on with what we're doing at the moment until the town, the council comes back with something more concrete for us.
Sandy, can I make a suggestion? Call the board secretary in Westall Branch. They have, they have municipal email addresses for both the planning board and the zoning board members. The reason, the, the concern about this is if there is some kind of litigation and somebody wants to obtain your emails, if there's a separate municipal email address for each of you, then they go there and presumably they're not kinda hunting and pecking through your personal computer and your personal emails. Now, everything we do, this, this board is very good. We use, I've always said we should only use email as a stamp. Just like, just like Sandy puts it in the, in the mail and mails you the plan. She may send you a PDF, here's the plan. We don't do any communication, conversation back and forth other than basic administrative things, like if someone's not gonna be able to attend a meeting and we're trying to see if we have a quorum. And that's the right way we should use email. But that doesn't preclude someone from filing an Oprah request, perhaps seeking copies of emails to see if people were improperly communicating outside of the public meeting or something like that. That's why it's prudent for towns to set up separate municipal email addresses for, for board members as well as for the governing body. And the issue was raised and they were looking into it. But I would just suggest, Sandy, that maybe you check with Westall, just to see what they do, because the two boards there have separate municipal email addresses for each other members.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the cost is. I'm sorry.
No, I said I would have been able to find Adam's resolution in about thirty seconds. Buried it my personally now.
That's, that's a fair point.
Unfortunately, the municipality doesn't have any stake in our privacy, so getting them to pay for it is uh, gonna be.
Well, I, I, the reason I bring it up, Al, is that, you know, that, that may very well be the cost, but they may have some other program or whatever it is that they're using over there because they have two boards, just like we do in the borough. So I, I doubt that they're paying a hundred dollars for each of those email addresses, but I could be wrong. I just figure we would just check.
Is that a yearly cost? Is it a one-off? Is it?
I, I don't know. I don't know.
I don't recall off the top of my head. I just remember it was a hundred dollars per address, and I, I don't know. That's just what I remember reading in the email. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I remember, I remember seeing it. Yeah, exactly. It should be, and it should be, well, you know what? We'll see what they come back with.
Yeah, who knows what they have?
I don't know. Um, the board professionals discussion, uh, we received, just to keep everybody in the loop, Todd received some information from the engineer. We are holding off uh, in, as, as we discussed last week for a planner waiting on the planning board, and I don't think they have met or made a decision about that, so we're just gonna table that until next month. Contract resi, the contract discussion for CME for the board engineer is in progress though, so that'll be decided, but we're just on hold with the, with the planner until um, until we move forward. Uh, twenty twenty annual report, did everybody get a chance to peruse the very fantastic, and again, I'm gonna thank Pat and Marty for doing that. It was, it's uh, it, it, it's a big undertaking and you guys did a really nice job, and I appreciate that. Um, did we all take a look at it?
I, I, I mentioned this before, and Pat and Marty, you guys did a wonderful job on that. That's uh, you should be applauded for that. That's a, that's a great document.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Um, are there any changes, suggestions, uh, anything people saw that they didn't understand or? We, we would like to get this. Now, bear in mind, this is the twenty twenty report. Right? That I know we've always been, it's, it's hard, I get it, you know, and I, I, we, we're supposed to be putting this to, to send into council, I guess, so. Um, anything to add, guys? Anything to change? I mean, if not, I, I, uh, does anybody wanna make a, a motion to adopt the report as submitted?
So, the motion is to approve the two thousand twenty-two annual report?
Two thousand twenty, two thousand.
I'm sorry, two thousand twenty annual report and adopt the resolution that's gonna send it to the governing body and to uh, the planning board.
So moved.
Give a second? I'll second it.
Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway? Mr. Ryan? Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Shiovetti?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Um, any members of the public?
Time to start on two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah.
You know, on that note, I, it occurred to me when I was looking this over, not that I was gonna delay it, but I think there are some possible changes to ordinances coming down the pike at some point. And I would be helped if we had some sort of memo, something from, you know, when it goes, however the process goes, the planning board to the Borough Council, and it gets made part of the ordinance, if the zoning board in particular was provided with ordinance updates so that we could keep abreast of uh, the new rules.
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Ches, you, you go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, we, uh, I, I, I still have that committee that the, where, where we are now is that we came up with a list of suggestions, things that, that, that we wanna move forward with. To my knowledge, Mr. Leader has forwarded a memo of that to the planning board for their review and discussion, at which case it's my understanding that it may come back to committee and then move on to the council level. That's. Yeah, I think we're probably, but the, 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 honestly, the, the goal and the um, uh, the timetable we're talking about is in, within six months. Uh, these are things that we wanna put in place this year. So, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I totally agree with it, that we should be made abreast of it. I believe it will be going to the planning board for discussion and public meetings, so um, that's, that's kinda where it's gonna go next.
What I, what I might suggest, because I, I understand that there's a lot of work being done on an overarching basis, but in general, anytime there's gonna be a revision to the land use ordinances, even though it may, it may originate with the planning board, first the ordinance has to be introduced by the governing body. Then it has to be referred to the planning board for review and report, goes back to the governing body, and then they either change it or adopt it. So in that process of anytime there's an ordinance, land use ordinance that's introduced and referred to the planning board for review and report, if maybe, Sandy, we're able to get, be copied on that when it goes to the planning board, then we would know it's being considered, and then if they adopt it, we see the new ordinance, and that would keep, I think, everyone current on even smaller changes, little tweaks to the municipal, uh, to the ordinances uh, going forward. And that might, that might address Ms. Quigley's concern as well.
There will be, I believe there, the, the, there is some idea to give the board some more oversight, our board some more oversight into certain areas. But that, that depends on what comes back from planning and, and shade your commission and that sort of thing.
I just don't like reading the minutes of the meetings of the council from, you know, six months ago and seeing changes that
Yeah.
that were made that, you know, uh, just sort of fly by us.
Well, that's, 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 that's a fair point. Very fair point. But there will be, and, and I assure you, when Mr. Leader returns, we will have more discussion on it, just to keep everybody abreast. Um, I don't wanna speak out of turn, so I'm not sure what is allowed to be said, not allowed to be said, but there will be more information before anything gets passed, trust me.
Yeah, but the other point is, once the ordinance is actually adopted, it's in effect. We may not get it till it's codified and we get the pages to go into our, our ordinance book, so it'd be helpful actually to have it. When, when, and when we see it referred from the governing body to the planning board for review and report, we'll know that it's being considered. And then if the, the governing body adopts it, we have a, we get a copy of it, and you'll be current, even though you haven't gotten the inserts for your, your codebook yet, because often they're only done once a year.
Oh, it'll be before that. Right now, well, honestly, right now in process is we, uh, it's, it's gone to the, the memo has gone to the planning board for a cursory review of it, and then the process moves on. So right now, we're at an early stage still. But there is a, uh, they, there, there is an expeditious timeline on, on these changes. Okay, um, open the public. Any members of the public wish to have anything to say, comment on, tell us what a great job we're doing? No? All right. The record reflect, nobody has interest in saying anything tonight. Uh, anybody have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna address the situation of um, potentially going back to live meetings in view of?
Yeah, um, that's, thanks, Mr. Irie. So um, I was, I watched the council meeting uh, the other night, and Mayor Halpern was uh, pretty insistent that the council go back to, given the um, recent uh, good numbers coming out of New Jersey, et cetera, et cetera. He wants to reopen Borough Hall uh, immediately, I believe, and move council meetings back to in-person. Um, I know there was some, given that they have a little bit more, a lot more flexibility than we do as far as moving on the fly with regard to notice materials and that sort of thing. Plus, I believe they'll be using uh, the owl system. Um, it, it did come up, and uh, it's definitely something that uh, we should discuss uh, doing. Um, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Leader, but I know that he is in favor of moving back to in-person meetings uh, as soon as we can. So if anybody um, has thoughts about moving back in person, I know it's something that the council definitely uh, is, is moving towards and, and obviously wants everybody to do. So. Thoughts, questions, concerns? Obviously, there will be some. Anybody? Mike, what sort of lead time do we really need? How much notice time are we looking at? Because right now, we've got, our next meeting is what, March the? Let's see, March the third, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what, what, what I would suggest is, once the board makes a determination, assuming it makes a determination, that it wants to go back live at some point, that we, we give ourselves a month so that we could not only get no Public Meetings Act notice out, which we have to do, but also allow um, applicants to clean up the notice, so it doesn't say it's gonna be done remotely and via Zoom. So I, I would, you know, once the board decides, all right, we're ready to go back live, when the board comes to that decision, whether it's now, next month, two months from now, whenever, then we could project it likely a month down the road. And, and it's also gonna depend upon how many people may have already given notice. So um, you know, this way, we don't have people giving, receiving notices in the mail that says it's gonna be via Zoom and then we're there live. So I, you know, I would suggest pretty much a month.
So, the, I'm just, just speaking, nevermind, let, let people have their say, but so say the April seventh meeting, I know we just put, I can't remember the applicant's name from last month with, with Mr. Von Arx. Uh, are they the, they're, they're the only application on the seventh, aren't they, Sandy?
They are, and we have two that um, are on March third that are um, noticing via Zoom.
Yeah, I think we're too soon. And, and this was something that was mentioned at council on Monday night, was that um, you know, obviously, the numbers look better today and they'll look better in a month, so they're obviously saying, well, this is our plan to go back then. I think that gives us, I think that March would be too soon for us to go back and that we should plan on maybe April the seventh meeting. Obviously, that would give the applicant time to notice, renotice if they had to for the seventh meeting. I mean, did, did we, did we resolve that without the, without the necess, necessity of renotice though, Mike?
It was carried without the necessity of renotice, as I recall, yeah.
So they would not renotice?
Well, I, I, I don't know, you know, if, if I were Atkins Council, out of an abundance of caution, I would issue new notice.
Right.
Would they have to, if we get our own Public Meetings Act notice out early enough? And if we get, if we get the, get it up on the website, and uh, you know, I don't know. If I were the Atkins Council, I would, I would notice just out of an abundance of caution that we're back live, just to try.
Obviously, we would notify them of that if we made it, if we made that decision.
Exactly. The other thing is, you know, if and when the board's ready to make a decision, you may wanna just project it out to May. Because then between now and then, when we carry something, we could announce that as of the May meeting, we'll be back live, or something like that.
That kinda sounds more prudent to me, just in terms of the matter that was carried. Um, I wouldn't wanna get caught in a squeeze play between the notice having gone out with the Zoom meeting and us saying you don't need to renotice and then going live instead.
And it's, it gives the board some time just to confirm that, yes, things are, have settled down enough that you're comfortable going live. And then, once you, once you decide that, anything that gets carried from March to May, or if Sandy's gonna start giving out dates in May, you can say, we're back live, we have plenty of time, get the old Public Meetings Act notice out, so on. But that's up to you if you've made that decision.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I think that's a good and prudent uh, uh, choice. Does anybody have a? Is it, Dr. Lawfer, what are your thoughts on moving to May?
I think, I think May would be the soonest that I would want to even consider it. You know, I, I have other concerns. Um, exposure, contagion is exposure over time. And uh, our meetings last for, can last for several hours. And I don't know what the ventilation system is like in Borough Hall, and uh, I know that we're pretty cramped quarters. And if somebody is in there that is positive, uh, you know, we do have people on our board that are uh, you know, not teenagers anymore, and I think that uh, uh, Elena, I'm sorry about that. You may be a teenager, but uh, but uh, uh, I, I think that I wouldn't rush to go back too soon. I, I'm just a little concerned about our quarters. I'm worried about exposure over time. And uh, this is not just passing somebody in the hall. This is spending a significant amount of time with uh, you know, with somebody, and I think May would be the very earliest, and I, I think that would be, that would be prudent.
Does anybody know about the situation with ventilation in Borough Hall, whether they have those uh, any? Any measurement that they've taken to? I don't know. What do they do? God, they do something. I know that they.
An air purifier?
Or something, air filters?
I really don't know if there are any.
You need to have an air exchange within a certain period of time to be compliant. And I, I don't know that we have that, and I, I would really like to know that. Um, you know, before we go back to sitting in a cramped quarters.
We know, any words? Has the planning board made the decision, Sandy?
No, their meeting is on the twenty-second, I think.
Okay, so maybe the board wants to just kinda defer this until the early meeting in March? See what other.
That would give us, that would still give us enough time.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
I think that sounds good, and if we could obtain somehow some information about the air exchange, because it is tight quarters over there.
I think these are very good points, and I would, I would.
I think these are very good points, and I would I would like to know what what the borough is doing to ensure that it is a compliant or safe space. It's or, you know, yeah, I would agree with Dr. Lawfer.
And Mike, there's not a, there's not a vaccine mandate in in the borough, correct? And in other words, you you can't, you can't, you know, mandate that people be vaccinated or boosted, you know, coming into those meetings. So I think I think clear of that. I think you need to know what your what your quarters are like and what the situation is like in the in the room that you're conducting your meetings. And I think it's for everybody's benefit.
That's fair.
And there's no windows down there. We need a new room.
Yes, we do.
It's my understanding that it's my understanding that there is some, the things afoot to make use of Fisk Chapel moving forward for a number of items. I'm not a huge fan of the acoustics in Fisk Chapel, but it is definitely a more open space.
But just for common sense to get some air in from the outside.
Hey, Pat, I'm trying to get you an email address. You want a new room?
One addition on the back of the
Okay.
But we may need some variances. I don't know.
Probably.
All right, so does the board just want to defer this until maybe the next meeting? Yeah, let's can learn in the meantime.
I agree. Let's bring this up at the at the March meeting, and we'll discuss further then and see how the landscape has changed a little bit. Okay. Anybody have anything else? No. Well, thanks, everybody, for all your input tonight. It was very good, and we'll see you next time.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn. Stay safe.
Oh. Second.
All a favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sandy. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.